Okay, we're gonna get going. All right, welcome to tonight's zoning board of adjustment meeting. Today is the Tuesday, October 9th. To my left is Mr. Carter Fark. He's the Deputy Planning Manager for the City of Nashua. Across the way here, we have Mr. Steve Lionel, Mr. Robert Shaw, and Mrs. Stoffia Boras, and I'm JP Boucher. This meeting is recorded by written transcript, and it's also video recorded. Please direct the testimony into the microphone, and we'd ask that only one person speak at a time. If you don't have a copy of the agenda, it's right on the side table there, over there. Tonight, we'll be hearing requests. It looks like just... So, we'll be hearing both special exceptions and variances, and I'll explain both of those. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that zoning, that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: that the request must be listed in the Table of Use Regulations as a special exception; the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety; the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system, or any other municipal system such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards of affecting health, safety, or general welfare; any special regulation for the use set forth and other restrictions of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled, and the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones, nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria needed to be established for the approval of variance are: that the variance will not be contrary to public interest; the spirit of the ordinance is observed; substantial justice is done; the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the City of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. Also, this board will hear all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting members are present at this meeting, which we have tonight, and we are expecting Ms. Kathy Vitale at any time, so she'll be joining us and be participating in tonight's meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the City of Nashua Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court, and you can contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part of tonight's meeting is called a public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony is as follows. First, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Second, those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Then, those in opposition with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Then, the applicant can return and has five minutes to speak in rebuttal. And then, finally, a representative, and only one person of those in opposition with questions, will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. Again, we ask you that you direct all testimony to this board and not the audience. If you have any questions about an application, feel free to ask, and we will get them answered for you. The second part of tonight's meeting is called a public meeting, where the board debates the merits of this case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. Please silence your cell phones, and if you need to have a conversation, we ask that you step out in the hallway. Mr. Fark, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Does anybody have any questions before we get started? Okay. With that, I'll call the first case. For Janet Freitas, owner of sixteen Rancourt Street, Sheet forty-nine, Lot one sixty-eight, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash thirty-two to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit. It's in the IRA Zone, Ward Three. This was tabled from the September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen ZBA meeting. Welcome back.
Hi, thank you. My name is Janet Freitas. I live at sixteen Rancourt Street. I've been there for ten years. I'm requesting a special exception for my aunt to move here from Florida. She'd like to be closer to the family in her older years. Her husband passed away a few years ago, and she would like to move here, so she would be living near me. And we've always been close, all of my life, and she would just like to be closer to the rest of the family. And many people in my neighborhood have made additions and add-ons, and it's never been a problem. And we plan on making a double driveway, so there'll be plenty of parking, and I think the plan looks pretty nice to fit into the neighborhood. And I don't really see any problems. I think Jeff has submitted a new picture, drawing.
Yeah, so we did... Did everybody see this? We received this in an email?
Yes.
Does anybody need to look at it and pass it around? Okay. And there's a picture of the home as it exists right now. So, we have the sketch.
Okay.
Any other?
Nope, that's pretty much it.
Any... We'll wait till we can look at that one, maybe have some questions. So, thank you for the sketch. It's more clear to me what you're requesting. And it appears in... And again, the sketch in this photo, I know it's not an architectural drawing or exact, but it's pretty representative of the scale of the existing house and then what's proposed on the addition. Right, so... And your testimony, again, the previous testimony is still on record. We have all that on record. Everyone that was here and spoke. And you had testified, sir, again, your name, just for the record?
Jeff Howe, Pembroke, New Hampshire.
Right. And Mr. Howe, you're the builder for the applicant. You had stated that the roof line was going to be pretty much the same height and so forth, so that's represented on this drawing. So, I just want to get that on the record. Are there any questions for the applicant, Mr. Lionel?
I was not present at the previous meeting, so it's possible that this was covered. But there are two things that I wonder about. One is, you mentioned a double driveway. How wide would that driveway be?
I guess I can go up to twenty-five feet.
Twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four, twenty-five feet, so I probably would go up to that. Probably twenty feet, I guess, I would go up to. I'm not sure yet. Depending... It would depend on how wide the house is. I would go in accordance with the house.
Okay. The ordinance restricts you to... You would need a variance if you were to exceed twenty-four feet.
Okay. I probably wouldn't, then.
Yeah. However, the drawing indicates a violation of one of the requirements for an accessory dwelling unit, which is that where no new entrance or exit to an accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed on the front or frontage side of the single-family dwelling. And your drawing clearly indicates a new entrance on the front of the building.
That entrance is going to access both?
It doesn't matter. It is a new entrance that's being constructed, and that would be a violation of one of the requirements for an ADU. Part of the reason for that requirement is so that an ADU that's constructed does not create the appearance of a duplex house. And to me, this drawing looks very much like a duplex. So, it feels to me as if it does not meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
It didn't look like a duplex to me at all. It was just... The door is in what would be the breezeway part.
That little part's going to be a breezeway. There's actually a little breezeway there now, and we're just turning the door.
I understand that, but just literally, the ordinance says no new front entrance would be constructed.
So, Mr. Lionel, I think Mr. Fark... We had discussed this last time, but Mr. Fark had some more information on this, as far as, you know, what he saw.
Well, we went over this at the last public hearing, and there's a little breezeway, entryway there now with a door. So, this door, it's really not a front door to the actual unit, although you can get... You can open up this front door that's in the middle, and you can go to the left to go into the single-family home, or you can go to the right to go into the accessory dwelling unit. So, it's really not like a new door. It's really acting like a porch door to go into the little breezeway.
Exactly. I already have a door there. It's just going to be, instead of going this way, it's going to go this way. There's already a door there. It's just going to be turned.
So, I mean, we didn't feel that it was like a front door that goes directly into the unit.
Okay, so it was discussed at the previous meeting?
Oh, yeah. We discussed it quite a bit at the last meeting.
Yes.
We think it meets the spirit of the ordinance overall.
Okay.
Ms. Lionel, at this point, we're just discussing, we're not trying to convince you one way or the other. I think, again, because there's a... You know, there was a discussion about what actually exists there right now, but the City Planning Department determined that what they saw was pretty much a... Whether or not it's in good repair or not was some type of a structure on the side of the house or a door on the side, and it's just being moved.
I couldn't see that from the picture or when I drove by.
Right, correct.
All right, that's all from me.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, the applicant? Okay, anything else we'd like to...
No.
Okay, you can have a seat for now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor? And again, we're going to just let you know that Ms. Vitale's here. Ms. Vitale, you were here last week, last time, on Rancourt Street. So, Ms. Vitale is very familiar with this case, so she will be participating in voting on this case. So, I just want to make a note that she is present at this point. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody like to speak with questions or concerns or opposition of this application? Nobody? Come on up, ma'am, and... Opposition at this point? Just give us your name and address, please.
My name's Pamela Moreau. I live at thirteen Rancourt Street, which is diagonal to the house. I just have one question. Is... We have not been... We do not have pictures of what the new drawing is like, but I would like to know how they're going to hook up to water and sewer for this new partition. Because last year, our street was paved, and there's a stipulation that nothing new can hook up to the street for five years. So, anything new going in there is going to have to hook to her house.
So, in an ADU, there is no new lines that are ever taken. It's always... It has to be part of the existing home.
Okay.
So, there would never be any new taps to sewer or to the water line.
Okay.
This is not a separate home, lot, you know, separate unit or anything on that. It's considered one home, and thus, they would do all that work from the inside of the house.
Even if it would be considered a rental property, it would have to be into one?
Right. It's no... Probably no different than an apartment building, right? Apartment buildings or duplexes, unless in certain towns have certain ordinance, but a lot of homes with two families have... A lot of them have just one line going into a home.
And that's what it's showing?
It doesn't show that. They wouldn't... They wouldn't... They would never really apply for that.
Okay.
And would... And I don't think it would... And again, it's out of our purview. Yeah, and it's a building code issue, right? So, it's already covered under some other rules that are not part of our purview, but I can pretty much assure you that there would be no second lines going into that property.
Okay. Now, I'd just like to address what you were saying about that side piece that you can't see. It is a very... If you want to call it a breezeway, a very small breezeway. It is more an enclosed entrance, kind of like the dormer you would come out of your basement. So, literally, it is a very tiny area that she would be moving a door. It's nothing that you could actually put anything in. So, just for the record. Thank you.
Any questions for...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Questions now? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition or with questions or concerns?
Good evening. Bob Amico, fifteen Rancourt Street. I just had a question, again, not seeing the drawings. Is the driveway shown, the wider driveway? We had the discussions prior about...
We can show you a sketch here. The driveway, again, she will have to apply for that with the city because it'll be a new curb cut?
No, no. It's in the place where the existing driveway is, from what I can tell.
I think she widens it, right? She's going to have to have a curb cut.
It doesn't look like it would need a new curb cut.
No, okay.
Just widening the existing one.
Right, it's no curb there, but I think the city may want to do some work there. I don't know. Yeah. I know you're... So, she has the opportunity to widen her driveway up to twenty-four feet without having to come and get a special...
No, that's a good thing. I'd love to see that. That was one of the concerns, was just making sure that there's ample parking accommodation. So, is that... I'm just concerned about getting into a situation where building goes up, driveway doesn't get enlarged.
And we can certainly make a stipulation that, with our approval, that the driveway would be widened to handle more capacity. I mean, I think that's within our right to do that.
And I believe that was part of the proposal, so I don't believe that's a hardship. That's the intent. Correct.
Yeah. So, we can discuss that, and we can certainly consider that as a stipulation. Sounds like that would relieve a lot of the concerns that the neighbors have had.
Very good.
Okay, just a question.
It's more the comment to follow up, because part of the criteria for the ADU is that additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family home, so that has to also be met. So, the idea... The intent of that is, when anybody's adding an ADU, that there is some comprehension or allowance for the fact that there could or would be expected perhaps to be another vehicle associated with that usage, so... But that is part of the criteria that the applicant is testifying will be met.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak with opposition, questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none, ma'am, you have the opportunity to come back and speak to anything that we've been talking about. And before you get started, I just want to review that in the previous meeting, I believe that you did testify that you would be meeting the accessory dwelling unit special conditions?
Yes, I did.
All those conditions, we had gone over that, and I just want to make sure that, you know, that's in the record, but just to reiterate again that...
That's why I'm up here. Just last meeting, I did say that I had planned on making the driveway wider. That was... I had planned to do that before, but of course, I'm not going to have it done until the building is done. There's no need in it. But I'd planned on going twenty, twenty-four feet, whatever I was allowed, so that's already part of the plan.
Okay, so you have no problems?
I have no problems with that at all.
With stipulation with that? Okay.
You can put it in there if you want to, but that's already part of the plan. I've been wanting a bigger driveway for a very long time, anyway.
Okay, great.
Any more questions?
Anything else? Okay, ma'am. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Again, the two parties that came up to talk with questions, concerns, or opposition, you do have five minutes, only one of you, to speak in rebuttal to the applicant, or you can rest. Okay, okay. Seeing that, the two individuals have decided to rest, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I think that... I'll just get going. I think that the previous meeting, the reason why we had tabled it was, is that we had no concept, or it was very difficult to figure out what the scale was and what was going to happen here, even though the applicant's builder had described it well enough, but I don't think there, you know, all of us were able to comprehend that. So, we do have a sketch in front of us. Again, the previous meeting, there was lots of concerns about cars and parking. So, I think that, again, a stipulation with a driveway to twenty-four feet, enough... Again, it's really enough to put two cars wide in the driveway, I think, would go a long way with satisfying the concerns of the neighborhood. And so, you know, with that, I would be in favor of the application. Any other comments, Ms. Vitale?
Yeah, I think that the... Having the driveway widened to the twenty-four feet should satisfy, even if they went to two cars for one household and one for the accessory dwelling unit, to be able to move things around in the two-car-wide driveway is much easier to do than with one-car driveway. So, I would be supportive.
Thank you.
I will support this. I still think it sort of looks like a duplex, but I'm going to ignore that for now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, I actually share the similar concerns as Mr. Lionel, and I think it's... I actually think it's a little bit kind of on the edge of things, and I get the city staff's opinion about this, and to me, it does actually look like a traditional breezeway entrance, and I do think it's more consistent with that concept than if the door was in the actual rest of the new structure addition, where then I think it would definitely have that duplex second front door feel. So, and I know we've already seen where... I'm pretty sure we've seen... We've had at least one case, I believe, where somebody already had a similar situation like this, where there was already an existing kind of second front door breezeway kind of door, and so I believe that was no issue for us. I think the fact that there was already a door on that side of the house functioning in a similar fashion, and I expect that there's probably a certain impracticality or unreasonableness to say that door would need to stay in the same orientation and not be on this breezeway part of things, but I do want to just put it out there that I think, again, at least the way I looked at it, I still... I can support it, but I think it's kind of pushing the envelope, if you will, so... But I do think that it's not the full sense of a second front door the way it could be if it was on that other structure.
I think that, again, it was definitely discussed in the past in the previous meeting. Mr. Carter really made, you know, good points about this, and I think one of the things we recognize, and one of the things that Mr. Fark brought up, is that, you know, this could have well have been a garage, an existing garage with a breezeway, and wanting to convert a garage, it's not the case, but it could be like that. So, you know, we're trying to really understand, you know, from the city's point of view, what they were looking at in bringing this forward, and so... And I do agree with you, you know, what it says in the dwelling unit, you know, special conditions, but I think in this case, you know, I can see past it because I know what it actually is. And it's not... It's not a breezeway or a room that I believe is going to be this big, like other, you know, anteroom, and, you know, like a big TV room or something like that. I think it's truly meant to be just a drop-off point, so... Okay. If... Does anybody want to make a motion? Or would you... Oh, I am so sorry.
That's okay. I'm also in support of the applicant.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. All right. So, if no one wants to make a motion, I'll make it. Okay. I'd like to make a motion for Janet Freitas at sixteen Rancourt Street. The description is Janet Freitas, owner sixteen Rancourt Street, Sheet forty-nine, Lot one sixty-eight, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code, Section one ninety-dash thirty-two, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit. This was tabled from the nine twenty-five eighteen meeting. It's in the IRA Zone. We find that it is listed in the Table of Uses. We find that it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We find it will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer, or other municipal system. We find that the special regulations are fulfilled. Those are the accessory dwelling unit regulations, that the applicant has told us that she fully understands at the previous meeting, and again, reiterate that this evening. We also find it will not impair the integrity, be out of character with the neighborhood, be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. We spoke in length as to the design of the structure. Again, why this was tabled was to get a more understanding of the scale and a sketch of the addition. We find that even though there is some... There were some concerns with the breezeway, that we understand that there was a door, a door existing on that side of the home, and so we have discussed that in length. With this, we are also going to put a special condition on this application, and we are going to put out a special condition of that the driveway must be widened to twenty-four feet after construction is completed. And with that motion, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Can we discuss the motion?
Yes, we can after somebody's seconded. Ms. Vitale? Do you want to put a timeframe on that?
No, I just... I'm not sure that the special... That special condition for the driveway is necessary. The ordinance already requires sufficient parking, and I wouldn't want to specify what the width of the driveway should be.
How about up to twenty-four feet, which keeps it right under having to come back here, but also will achieve the amount of parking that...
That would be all right.
Yeah. I agree with you. I think there was just so many comments from the neighbors, and I think that the applicant is pretty much saying, hey, I want a double-wide driveway.
Yeah, I agree. The applicant intended to do that in the first place. We don't... I don't remember us putting a condition like that in previous...
Well, I mean, the condition is reasonable. They've... The applicant has stated that they're going to do it anyway. I mean, they could put up a twenty-four-foot drive... Up to a twenty-four-foot wide driveway by right. They just need to get a street opening permit from DPW. If the board wants to put a condition like owner to construct a driveway up to twenty-four feet wide, you know, prior to CO, that's reasonable, I think. They're going to do it anyway, but...
Yeah. Just seemed unusual to me.
Doesn't hurt to put it in, I guess.
So, what do we need to do to Ms. Vitale?
I'd like just to amend the wording of your motion that the special condition would be to... That the owner would construct a driveway up to twenty-four feet wide to satisfy the special condition for the approval.
To meet the park... To meet the parking?
Yes.
That's fine, okay. All right. Is that amended to you, Mr. Lionel? Okay. So amended. With that, any more discussion? All in favor of the application? That's five to nothing. Ma'am, congratulations. Your application, your special exception, has been approved. Just be aware, again, as I explained before, there's a thirty-day window appeal, in case somebody want to file an appeal, so I would just be wary of that. Other than that, you can contact Mr. Fark at any time. If you have any other questions, move forward. All right, have a good evening. With that, I'll close case number one and open case number two. Case number two is... I will apologize for pronunciation of French. It's Kurt and Hsu Fang Sun of Two Elma Drive. Again, the description is Kurt and Hsu Fang Sun. Again, I apologize. Owners of Two Elma Drive. Owners of 2 Elmer Drive, Sheet C, Lot 146, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code 190-32, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit on the back of an existing house. It's in the IRA zoning district. Come on up, whoever's here for that. You can lower the mic, and you can pull that down, and, right ahead.
Sorry, what?
Your name and address?
Kurt Sun, 2 Elmer Drive.
Okay. So you're here. We have your application. Is there anything that you wanted to tell us before, or have your builder talk to us about?
Yeah, so it's, I'm just rebuilding the burned-down house, and I want to add an in-law addition so my mom could live there, and I'll take over the main house.
The addition is in the back of that...
Sorry, just, just your name, and even though we know before, your name and address.
Jeff Howe, Pembroke, New Hampshire.
Okay.
Coincidence I'm here, and I haven't been here for years. Two cases in one night. So the addition will be on the back. It's a small bump out. You can't see it from the Elmer Drive. You can see it from Ridge Road, but I think you can see from the drawings, it doesn't stick out that much. I mean, it's, it's not like, it's, it's out of place. So it's a small addition on the back. I think it's around 500 square feet.
Okay.
You can get to it from the inside of the house. It does not have its own entrance that you can see from the street, anyway. There is a door on the side, but that enters the main part of the house, and then you go into the, go through a laundry room and a mudroom type of area to get into the addition.
Okay, that was pretty straightforward on your drawing, on the drawings, yeah?
Yeah.
Anything else you'd like to add? Okay, hold on, just, let me have some questions for you. As before, right? Plenty of parking.
Ah, yes.
Yeah.
Fairly large driveway. It's like a four-car driveway at the moment.
You might need to get closer to the mic, just so we can make sure it gets on the record.
I'm sorry. I said it's a four-car driveway at the moment, is what it exists now. It should be plenty.
Questions?
Just through the special regs.
And before we move on, the accessory dwelling unit, special regu, special regulations, you aware, you aware of this? Mr. Howe, you aware of this?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sun, are you, are you aware of this?
I'm not entirely sure what it is.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna show you this, and we're gonna need to get your affirmation, because in the end, it's your home and not builder's home, but... So, just to pick it up. In fact, I got one here. I don't know why I'm asking this.
It's all, it's all, it's a big door on the back, not on the side.
So let's, let's, like, why don't we just quickly just review these real quick, Mr. Sun? All right. So the first one is accessory dwelling unit should not, should be clearly incidental subordinate to the extent, use, and purpose of the primary structure, and does not exceed 750 square feet. It's about 500 square feet, and it's, and again, it's subordinate to the main structure, right? The accessory dwelling unit shall only, shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as a single-family dwelling unit. That's pretty clear. The third item is accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character of the parents or the single-family dwelling, or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood. A, and there's three sections under that, no new entrance or exit to the accessory dwelling unit should be constructed on the front or front foot side. That's not there. There's no curb, new, new curb cut to the street shall be constructed. You have an existing driveway, which is going to be adequate for your needs. The exterior design accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling unit through architectural use and building forms. Your, there's a, there's a pretty, there's an engine drawing here in front of us, and it appears that it's all going to be made to blend into the home. The fifth item, the next item would be that the owner of the property shall provide the city of Nashua with a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Registered Deeds, along with the appropriate filing fees. I won't read the whole covenant, but there's a covenant there. Do you agree with that?
Uh, yeah. Yes.
So, so, again, that just states that, that you, you meet the code. That's all that is. So, so, so you'll have to, that's something that you're going to have to do.
File separate, this, separate thing, okay.
All right. The next one is only one additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard. You meet that minimum standard with the additional parking space. An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit. I believe that that was in the drawing. An interior door, we want that, the single-family dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit should not be separated in ownership, including by county and union ownership.
Yeah, well, on the entire...
Right, that's always going to be together. And then accessory dwelling units shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings, and shall not be associated with manufactured housing as, as defined in our say, 674-31. So, so again, I, that's pretty obvious here. So with us going this, and I know that we summarized this, but again, we just, we need your affirmation that you'll comply with all these.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. You can have a seat for now. You can have that. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions or opposition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
Seems straightforward to me. Everything falls into place, and I have no issues with it.
Okay. Stone Island?
I have no issues.
Ms. Vitale?
I'm supportive.
Ms. Boris?
I'm in support.
I'm also in support. It was a pretty thorough application, and it was very clear what they were doing. Anybody like to make a motion? All right, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for owner Kurt and Hsu Feng Sun, 2 Elmer Drive. Description is Kurt and Hsu Feng Sun, owners of 2 Elmer Drive, Sheet C, Lot 146, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code, Section 190-32, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit on the back of an existing house. It's in the IRA zoning district. We find it is listed in the Table of Uses. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. We find it will not overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal system. We find that the special regulations are fulfilled per the testimony of Mr. Sun, the accessory dwelling unit special regulations. We find it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, and be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. Again, we have a detailed drawing, and we find that it is within the character of the neighborhood. There are no special conditions on this application, and with that, I make a motion to approve the special exception. Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is five to nothing. Congratulations, your application, your, your, your application has been approved. Again, be aware that there's a 30-day window of appeal, like you heard before. Other than that, good luck. Thanks for coming. With that, I'll close the public hearing for case number two and open the public meeting for case number three. Case number three is owner David Rio, addresses 21 Ferry Road. Description is David Rio, owner, 21 Ferry Road, Sheet 58, Lot 10, requesting a variance from Land Use Code 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the 24, into the 20-foot required right side, yard setback to construct and attach 22-by-24-foot two-story garage. It's in the R18 zoning district. Welcome. Come on up and name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Grant. I'm the builder for Mr. David Rio at 21 Ferry Road. We had a little slight change of plans the other night. The square footage is going to stay the same, but we're taking out the second floor of the roof. We're not doing the second floor on this. Just a single-floor, two-car garage. That's it.
Okay, so, so again...
The footage is going to be the same.
So this doesn't change the application the way it's advertised, even though they're taking the second floor out, right?
It's actually less intensive and less, less dense, so it's, it doesn't, it does need to be re-advertized, right?
Right. But the, the, but the incursion will, the incursion, the footprint will remain the same, so the incursion will remain the same.
Right.
Any else like to add before we ask any questions? No. Is there any questions for the applicant? Pretty clear, you know, what's happening.
Pretty much straightforward. I mean, I'll, I'll gladly give the building department a new set of plans, just in single-floor only, that's it.
Yeah, that's something that Mr. Fox has required.
Not a problem. I have no problem with that.
Thank you, board. Is there any questions for the applicant? I don't want to rush anybody. Just want to make sure that we're satisfied. Are you sure, Mr. Shaw? Ms. Boris? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is anybody here like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions or concerns or opposition? Seeing none, is somebody else in the audience but the applicant and his builder? So I don't think that's the case. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Again, the less intensive use is always, always great. I think that it's a minimal incursion, you know, five feet, still leaves 15 feet. I went out and looked at the property. I think it'll fit in, and you'd have to really kind of look at it to say, hey, that, that looks like it's incurring, you know, being it's an incursion. But again, I think it's pretty straightforward, and I support the application.
I, I support the application, and surprised the owner's not putting up a fence to shield from all of those Halloween decorations next door.
All right. Ms. Vitale?
No. I think, I think it's a good application, and meets all the...
Mr. Shaw?
I'm good with it.
Ms. Boris?
I'm in support.
Okay. If no one wants to make a motion, I'll make it. I'll make it.
I'll do it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Give you... Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the owner, David Rue, of 21 Ferry Road. He's requesting a variance from the Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach five feet into 20-foot required right, or setback to construct and attach 22-by-24-foot two-story, which is now a one-story garage. Zoning District R18. This variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible to, for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. The size of the garage that is being requested is a very typical garage size. The site of the house that is going on is also the most conducive to a garage, and the five-foot encroachment is very reasonable and for the area that it is in. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. There has been no testimony one way or the other, and there are no testimony outside of the applicant. It's not contrary to the public interest. Substantial justice will be served. I make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your, your application has been approved. Again, there's a 30-day window of appeal, so good luck. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I need to call and have those granted by Monday. Great, thank you very much.
Have a good night. Have a good night. So with that, I'll close case number three. Good, Mr. Shaw? Thank you. So now we have a rehearing request, and I'd like to take a look at that now. All right, so I'll read that in to the record. The owner is Wilmar LLC. Requester of the rehearing is Attorney General Prunia. Case address is 4 Blackstone Drive. This is a rehearing request from the 8/28/18 public hearing. Wilmar LLC, owner, Western Associates, applicant, 4 Blackstone Drive, Sheet H, Lot 520, requesting the following: one use variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-15, Table 15-1, number 193, to construct a climate-controlled self-storage facility, and variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-45, Section A, to allow a convenience store gasoline station within 750 feet from the property line to property line to another gas station, 512 feet proposed. It's in a GB Zone 2. Note that the zoning board denied the request for the storage facility and approved the request for the convenience store gas station. So again, this is a rehearing request for the denial of the storage facility. So in our process, we look at four criteria for the rehearing request. Has everybody had a chance to review this? I think most of us were, were here for that, for that meeting. Okay, so we're all familiar with it. So we'll just, if there's any, any differences or objections, well, I guess we'll just start off with the first question, and we'll, we'll go around, and we'll, I'll ask the question, and then we'll just discuss that.
That's fine. I think the only other thing is you just note that besides the rehearing request, we have the response to the rehearing request from Bukowski Realty Holdings LLC. So somewhere, I think we want to have that noted and part of the record as well.
Okay. Do you think, Mr. Shaw, that we should read that in, or just to note that we have it?
I think we can just note that we have it, and if we feel that the argument's being made, that this is saying that the rehearing request should not be granted, we could reference that. I just wanted to at least note that.
Right, so there, so again, Mr. Prunia had filed a rehearing request, but there's also another letter here from, from Bukowski Realty, Realty Holdings. It was a response to the petition for rehearing. So basically, as Mr. Shaw stated, the, the general idea is, the general sense here is that they, they don't believe that there should have been a rehearing request granted. But with that, we're going to move forward. All right, so are we, are we good to move forward?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. The first question was, is, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying somebody the right to be heard, et cetera. Our process usually is, is that we go around the table, and I'll start here. I, I don't believe that there was none, so I say no to that. Ms. Boris?
No, there was not.
I'd say no.
Mr. Shaw's no. Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Lionel's no, and Ms. Vitale?
No.
It's no. The second question that we must answer is, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and/or variance? I'll start off, I'll say no, and again, with that, I'll say is that we had very detailed discussions on this case. Ms. Boris?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Lionel?
No.
Ms. Vitale?
And no, I agree.
So that's, I'll no. The third question is, does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? I'll answer, I don't believe there's none. I don't see anything, and so my answer would be no. Ms. Boris?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
I agree. I think it was mostly just, seemed to be, to me, just kind of... I think it was mostly just, seemed to be, to me, just kind of reiterating the arguments that were made to us during the actual application. So I say no.
Right. Ms. Laino?
No.
Ms. Vitale?
And I would say no also.
All right, so that's also five nos. And the last question that we must answer, is there anything which we would or could cause the board to make a different decision? Again, I, I would say no, and, and again, just reiterating what Mr. Shaw just said, I, I think this is just, again, re, going over what was presented to us at the beginning. So my answer would be no. Ms. Boris?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Ms. Laino?
No.
Ms. Vitale?
No.
Okay, seeing that we have answered all no to the questions, I'll make a motion to deny the rehearing request for owner Wilmar LLC. Requester of the rehearing is Attorney General Prunia. Case address is 4 Blackstone Drive. Again, I'll read the rehearing request from 8/28/18 public hearing. Wilmar LLC owner, Western Associates, applicant 4 Blackstone Drive, Sheet H, Lot 2520, requesting the following: One, use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, 193, to construct a climate-controlled self-storage facility. And, do I need?
I don't need it.
So I'm not going to read the rest of that, because we're just dealing with this first part, so, so basically, I'm, we are making a, a motion to deny the rehearing request for the self-storage facility. So my, my motion is to deny the rehearing request for the, we had, we, we reviewed the rehearing request, questions that we must answer for questions. We unanimously all gave our opinion as to the fact that there is nothing no, no to all the questions, and there's nothing new that we have seen in the petition for rehearing. So my motion is to deny the rehearing request.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Laino, any discussion? All those in favor of denying the rehearing request? It's five to nothing, so that motion fails.
The mo, no, the motion passes.
I mean, motion, I'm sorry, the motion passes. I, I, again, you're correct. We're so used to looking the other way.
The rehearing request will not go forward.
The rehearing request will not go forward.
Double negative.
So make that clear. Thank you, Ms. Laino. Okay, with that, we'll move on. I'll wait a minute here for Mr. Shaw to catch up. We're just gonna, next, next item was, we're just gonna look at, there's a meeting minutes, right? Yeah, so, just one, yeah, 25, right. So there's meeting minutes from September 25th, 2018.
One thing I saw right in the very beginning, in the first sentence where it says a public hearing.
Lot's 20th, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll fix that.
So, so Mr. Mr. Fox has agreed to change that?
Fix it before I leave tonight.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anything else that anybody's noticed, or has any questions or concerns with the meeting minutes?
No.
No. Anybody else? Okay, so, I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable. Ms. Boris, comfortable?
Okay.
Everybody was comfortable? All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the September 25th, 2018 meeting minutes. Anybody want a second minute? Ms. Vitale? Any discussion? All those in favor? So that's five to nothing unanimous. All right, and then the next item is, we have an agenda for the next meeting. And again, we're looking for regional impact. I didn't see anything, but I just want to make sure that we're all comfortable with that also. Yeah, okay, we can discuss that on that night of that meeting. Okay, any regional impact?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't see any regional impact. Is there any other business? Anybody like to make a motion?
To adjourn.
Okay, motion is to adjourn. All those in favor? That's five to nothing. We're adjourned at 7:25.